Call the meeting's order at six thirty-five, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic of Canada, one nation, united, indivisible, eternal.
Roll call, please.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Present. There are no trustees sending remotely, we're all here. First item on the reports for the Mayoral report. A couple of acknowledgements, I'd like to acknowledge a group of local veterans that recently took upon themselves to help restore the tank that is behind Village Hall here on Top Street. We have Jay Jaswiak, Jim Hubble, Daniel Jedniak, Tim Knudson Jr., and Bill Lindeman are here today. All right, well, we just want to again thank them. They've, if you go take a look at the vehicle behind the building, they did a great job restoring this. It is a favor for the village, so again, we appreciate that work that they do. I also again want to take a quick moment of silence for last weekend on September eleventh, which again, I want to make sure that we acknowledge that date every year, so again, take a brief moment of silence to remember those victims of September eleventh. Thank you. Citizens wishing to address the board, we have one signed up. If anybody else wishes to address the board, we have a sign up sheet here. We have, then a clerk will read the instructions for the public comment section of the village board meeting, and again, let me take it from there.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public to have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board knows to protect, protect visibility and inform office meeting. Please be respectful of the duties of the board and get the credit process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. They said multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor chair of the meeting reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time of public comment. The board did not respond to comments or attempts to answer questions during public comment period.
Thank you. As you'll notice, we have a new piece of equipment in the room, which is timers of the speaker, you see how much time they have left, so. Jim, all right, with the shot clock guy, okay. So, I do have one signed up tonight, right now it's Linda Monti. Linda Monti, if you want to come up and speak now, or you want to speak later, okay. Anybody else? All right, so then we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are quite a few items on the consent agenda, eight items. Are there any motions or objections to remove any of the consent agenda items? A motion trustee, Luther, second trustee Pierce. Any discussion?
This is a point where I think we moved the consent agenda, they're just calling me the second, or remove it.
So we will have item number eight moved down to the regular business item, it'll be the first item on regular business. Any other items on the consent suggested for removal? Otherwise, entertain a roll call, a motion to the second for the consent agenda. Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Dominik, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. First item on the regular business agenda is approval of a resolution granting a special event liquor license for the team's horsemen. Chapter twenty-five north, the fourth anniversary party, to be held on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, waiving all fees, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-two, and I believe there are representatives here to answer the questions that people may have, so. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Mason. Second trustee Berman, discussion trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason. Trustee Peterson. Trustee Luther.
The reason I wanted this moved off the consent agenda is more a general discussion, I was almost going to do a few of the items, but familiar with them. But we're talking about waiving the fees for that, and I was wondering if we have a set policy on which groups or what charities get these waived? Or what type of events, or are we just doing it for the event and for groups?
Third, please.
Titled the special event, like licenses are granted to nonprofits, and the application has a checkbox for the president to be waived. It's a bit weird, because it's been waived, and that's because the licenses from the code for special events, something I know is a lot more. The waiver.
I guess, I guess my question, that was my only question on this, that I understand the group does a lot of charity work, but I don't see anywhere in here that it's a charity event, it's just a party. That's what my concern was, is that.
Trustee Peterson.
I just have a question. So this is your party and your event, and these funds that you're going to make off this party are part of the funds that you donate to the veterans and their families, and. Okay. That's about the only question.
Trustee Berman.
I have no question.
Trustee Dominik.
I, I don't have any questions about this specifically, but I think trustee Luther picked up, or brought up a point that we may even want to speak about in another time, which is the chamber bleeding to that profit, and then historically we have waived fees. And that's something we consider down, down the road, but at this point, I have questions about this request.
Any other discussion? Trustee Pierce? Okay. All right, if none, I'm going to enter to the roll call, please.
Pierce.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seven, six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Luther. Any discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Pierce.
Mason.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution granting a request to dedicate a park bench to Donald Skidmore, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-three. Do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Peterson, any discussion regarding this item? Trustee Pierce.
Good thing, that's all I want to say. John Skidmore was a great asset that was committed in this community, and there's something he did that.
Peterson.
And I hardly agree. John Skidmore was an excellent administrator and a superintendent for District Thirty-four and Shepherd, that district, and amazing things, and I was part of it as well, so I'm really thrilled to do this.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mason.
Peterson.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Is Kevin here? Okay. The moment you've all been waiting for, all right. Item number eleven, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting and approving the one hundred percent design development package for the community openly spaced redevelopments in the Village Maniac as prepared by the Lakota Group, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-four. For those of you that walked out in plain English, this is the final plan for the Pitman property, Village Green, whatever you want to call it. Kevin Clark is here in person, Mike Jansen from Strand is on Zoom, and Jim Kind is here to present the final plans and three D designs, thank you. Motion, wish motion trustee Dominik.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson.
Thank you, your honor. So this is an important milestone in this project. Steering committee has met several times, and the design teams have been working to accomplish the design development package, which at this point we have a cost. So that's all included in your packet, but we've got some conversation about some of these items. I would say you should treat this item as you know, a way to move the project forward while still knowing there are changes that can be made. So I think there's a discussion about this tonight, but, but know that there is still opportunity to modify and or change certain elements, but what we have come up with in the design development phase is really a good plan for this park, where, you know, we know where things are going to be at, we, we have elevations, I consider this kind of a completion of preliminary engineering. And what happens next, if the board approves, is all of these things get moved to construction documents for permitting, bidding, and building. So it's my hope tonight that there, there is some discussion that we can move forward with this. We have a pretty aggressive timeframe to construct this park, and if that's meant to happen, we need to go forward. But at the same time, you do have the right, you know, to discuss, and nothing here is set stone at this point. But we have, I think our best effort and ideas are on paper for you to see, and you have pictures to look at, and three D renderings to look at. Kevin Clark has been leading the effort from the Lakota Group, he's here tonight, and I believe he's going to take you through some slides, and I guess it's the first time in public that you have an opportunity to see what we've designed so far, what this park is. I hope everybody's pleased with what they see, and Kevin, why don't you?
Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Apologies to the little light, two hours from Chicago here, so I'm talking my thoughts. I am joined by my colleague at Strand, Mike Jansen, who's remote. But as Jim noted, typical process for a design of a public space like this is to go through a design development before you get into technical documents, which is kind of our next phase, so. This is kind of the end of the pretty picture phase, where you see all those illustrative renderings and three Ds, and we start to get into the details of how you build things, and dimensions, and all of those, all of those items. But just a good milestone checkpoint to give in front of you guys, and as a reminder to public, you know, what the program is and what the plan is thus far. And I, I just want to remind everybody that we went through a lengthy targeting process when we were doing the downtown duplication, and we were showing concepts for this property, a number of different things, a range of things, and just getting opinions on, you know, what, what do people want to see? You know, we each decided part of that program, so part of that was establishing that program. I do. Almost my production. Oh, shoot.
Kevin, would you like, would you like me to share my screen?
If you could, Mike, that'd be great.
Yeah, let me see once here. Bear with me. Hopefully you can see that?
Yes. Maybe make it a little bigger?
You bet.
All right. Great. And just really quickly, we, we established this program through that process, engaging people, designing for line walks and other events, just talking to folks and, you know, putting stickers on things and drawing things, and that was well over a year ago, and here we are. We've had our steering committee meetings getting to this point, so just to outline what the program is and what's happening, as you see on the screen here. The major elements of this, of this project, number one, we want a daylighted creek, right, we have a creek. Bringing that through, something that feels more natural, that people can see, maybe touch, get closer to. Right, it's been in the culvert for a really long time, it is daylighted, but you can't really get near it right now, so it's safe. So making that a feature that runs through the site. Then having places to get to that, so naturalizing that embankment, the channel, making that feel more natural, the stone. Some outcropping that comes down the slope, so you can, you can sit along the slope in different places, and also these four quadrants of, of the plan, be able to, thanks, Mike, be able to get, get near the water, or see that, or enjoy the, enjoy the park. Other major elements, pavilion there at A, which would kind of serve to me as you guys have these great events. It's really close to Skidmore and that parking lot, the band shelf, if you had kind of a scalable event, you'd be able to bring over, you know, maybe more music or other performances in that area, where there's a new amphitheater space. Just kind of formalized space with a flexible pavilion, so an old day, you can kind of sit under it, enjoy it. It is a feature, it does have an architectural character that is quite striking, but also just having small performances there as, as needed, as programmed. Connecting that across north, south, at G is a bridge feature, goes over the water. You know, we envisioned this, and I would show some images, but show a lot of stuff. The bridge feature, stone elements, kind of bringing that limestone, that natural kind of plate feel that you guys have across to the idea of a cafe building at H, which would have really simple concessions and bathrooms, bathroom facilities on, on either end. And we have some images of what, what that could look like. And then to the, to the east of that, and this is kind of a change that you guys saw, just like with the winding paths, having a nice gateway pavilion, pergola structure, some overhead lights, and some water. Something that'd be, that's tactile, some pavement. This was also something we showed in our visual preference surveys as we were going to public engagement, showing different things. So, you know, how, how does that look, and we've got some music of that, and then a playground very east, that would be secure, so fence around it, interior access points, interior gates from, from the interior of the site, so that it's not, you know, people can't get it out from the outside. A few other elements, so as you see at the corners, and as you see at, at P, which is at the, as near the Skidmore intersection, kind of a larger paid area, it would be the plaza space, so if you had a holiday tree, which we've implied there, if you had a lighting or some other event, we'd have space for that to happen. So, you know, just a little bit more space to, to have people out there, and, you know, if you're having markets or other things, creating your events, we'd be able to have still a very flexible space. I think being flexible is a big part of this, so that you can, you can kind of figure out what works best, and, and let it, let it kind of adapt from there. You know, we, you know, recall, we went through, show you guys hard scale materials and all those kind of things, and from that, from that last meeting, we, we honed in on that, and kind of applied in our renderings that you've seen a second, what those things look like together. And kind of how they all, how they would all create cohesive and beautiful park spaces. I think, I guess I'll go to the next, because the three Ds really tell the, fill the story. So we just go on to, I've got a few of these three D renderings that we've done, just to give you a feel for what that looks like. Always like the screen behind me. So this is that pavilion, the amphitheater space, kind of that really simple normalized space that you could have small events, lots of seating, lots of flexibility, walk that comes from the main and orchard corner that comes toward that, the major focal point feature. Time to cross with that stone bridge, all the way across the creek. Some native planting on that slope, you know, this image is looking kind of from the east to west. You kind of see in the background that, that plaza feature where the Skidmore intersection was, and we're implying, not an architect, and we're saying architects are implying what that building looks like. At least to kind of match the character of the site. See materials like stone, little bluestone underneath the pavilion, some pavers, concrete locks, limestone as, as the, as, to the walls and kind of the bridge features and thing, and the slopes at the creek, at the creek edge. Kind of seeing the background, what that looks like, how that, how that would step down that slope. You want to go to the next one, Mike? Showing an image, kind of looking above, from the bridge towards, toward the west, you know, just the image of what that might look like at, you know, dust of that, of that edge, of that naturalized creek. And how the landscape interplays with that, how we can have rows of trees for people to hang out under. You know, we're showing little furniture adjacent to that cafe space, overhead lighting. You know, nice formalized tree canopy, we want to establish some kind of tree canopy along that northern edge, we do have, we do have Depot Street coming through and parking adjacent to that, so just really kind of buffering that parking and creating a nice edge. You can kind of see the pergola feature lit up in the, in the background along that walk there. And then just breakout spaces, gathering spaces, where we show pirate pits, with that randock chairs, just places for people to be. We want it to be multi-season, multi-generational, inviting for everybody. These are the things that we've done in the past, where we've done pirate pits, we've done other spaces like that, and it's really attracted a lot of people, and we talked about that, there are questions. You can kind of see at the end too, how we treat those, those kind of, where the, where the creek goes through the wetland area, through the culvert again, it's got to go back to the culverts, right, underneath the orchard. How we treat that, so it looks like the bridge, so it looks like that same feature, so everything feels ruined and cohesive. Maybe if you go to the next one? This just shows an image from, if you were kind of standing at the end of the, or sitting at the amphitheater, straight, straight north toward that pavilion, that pavilion space, you can kind of see the other where the culvert is, over at the main street, main street area on the left. See that river edge and how that, or the creek edge, and how the slope and the native landscape interplay with that, how we frame the pavilion with shade trees, providing that, you know, extra texture of shade. And then a peek to the, to the cafe building in the background. And really kind of, we wanted to emphasize that we have a street back there, and we have cars, and we're really focused on the landscape and space, the, the open space and the green, right? Just giving you a feel for what that looks like, and again, at the DD level, this is, you know, this is where we are. Once we get to construction documents, then it's, maybe we got to do details for how all the grading works and all that happens. And we've done, obviously, a lot of that work with Strand as a civil engineer, about slopes and all that stuff, to make sure everything works, and we have access for everyone, and it feels comfortable. And that people can get, you know, to different places on the site, no matter what the levels are, and, and that's really important. Maybe the next one, Mike? Image kind of hovering over that, that pergola feature from Depot, as you come in to that kind of what we call like the little splash pad water feature there. And how you, we come in underneath that pergola, there's a couple little scum sea walls, places for people to sit, parents sit and watch their kids run in the water. As, as the dad of two, I've been there, and know that any place to sit needs to be comfortable, lots of shade, lots of trees. Again, just trying to give you a feel for that overall, just like a bird's eye perspective, or how that, how that works together. Plenty of room to go around it, you don't want to be in the water, and clearly, these are things that, in the winter, it's off. Or you can create an arc, you know, they have lighting as part of, built in as part of the nozzle, so you can do cool things with the, with those, where you light different colored bulbs or things like that. So creating kind of features out of that, very round. And, and thinking about how it all works, not just in the beautiful summer days, but all season. And then I think I have one more here, and this just kind of looks from the west to east. At that plaza space I was referring to, just maybe off to the left there, the idea that you could have your holiday tree there, where the tree lighting might be. So that really kind of focal point tree, whether it's, whether it's a live tree that we select from nursery, or one that you guys have and set up there, either way, you can create a space for that, you know, the stone sea walls, and then steps down toward the, toward the creek, toward the water in that location, kind of these openings. And then you can see how the, the walk curves up through the pavilion space toward the orchard main intersection, how that organic feel all kind of, all kind of works together, create the open space in that, in that natural, natural space that people told us they liked when we always showed different concepts. With that, I don't know if there's anything else that we can touch upon right now, or Mike did anything, I can answer your questions, or.
I'll go around, starting here with trustee Pierce, any questions or?
Sure. I like, I like the general layout of this. I think more as you mentioned earlier, the cost. Mr. Kai mentioned the cost of the projects in, in all this, and just for the record, we know it's estimated at a fifty million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is a lot of taxpayer money. There's a twenty-five week, so. Um, is there just in case?
There's contingency, we always feel like contingency on any project at this level, just so we know, you know, if the undersun knows, or escalation of, you know, right now, you know what's happening with. It's going to be more expensive.
Trustee Pierce, did you?
I'm sorry, I said I think a three million dollar bump on the, in case of incidentals or extrusions is a little extravagant.
Keep in mind that that will, that would be at this design development phase, by the time we get to construction documents, there is not twenty-five percent, right, I believe, less than ten percent contingency going into construction. I like to think my projects have been five years, and I think I've trapped up there with doing, so. Know that, that doesn't mean it's going to be three million dollars to play with, it's some kind of slush fund for us to, you know, the designers to take into account, to still. Take costs very seriously, and I look for opportunities throughout this process to save money and at reasonable cost.
And I appreciate that, I just want to make sure we're all in touch here. So now I'm going to add cost to this. Since I've called out the cost. One thing I didn't notice here, and I appreciate all the open space, how will we, in this day and age, keep the park going into there, especially if you have like a nice little fence around the playground, it's likely to stop the park. If somebody decides to pass out at their department spot, accidentally jumping into the playground, after this, choose to do something else. How will we stop it, ensuring the safety of the site?
Sure, Mike, maybe if you go back, yes, thank you very much. If you'll notice that all the corners, Jay, Jay, just in general, because we want, we want the playground away, but at every, at every corner, we're showing the idea of like raised planter areas, we've got the clock tower that we're going to replace at the corner within that raised planter area. So little walls, we can add bollards along those edges, we can have blue bolt planters, we do, it's kind of hard to see at the scale, but these little curved sea walls that actually have structure, so that sortifies those edges in a beautiful way. So we're very cognizant of that. Now, I, if somebody wanted to, you know, we have trees, we've got all kinds of elements. I, I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping all of that really kind of contained.
I'm just thinking something we need to ensure.
Okay.
And then I know other people got other questions, so the one thing I'm going to ask about is the water level. When we, when we get fight into the rain on Sunday, it's one day, but there's a lot of times when we've got very little water coming down the Sequid Creek.
Yeah.
It becomes like a little trickle.
Yeah, and we, we're aware, we know it's the water level generally usually going to be pretty low. That's why we got to create, you know, at that channel, it's going to have stone towel, it's going to have, it's got to have a finish, right? So it still looks like a feature, we still have that native. Um, so it still looks like a feature, we still have that native landscape, we still have the outcropping stones, so it's still interesting. Um, that's, I mean, we can't really create more water on a daily basis without doing something pretty, I guess, extreme, but.
Well, maybe Mr. Kai can answer this, the sawmill has a water stop, and that's adjustable. Are there thoughts of using that to help this up, right?
Actually, yes, um, you know, hydrologists involved in this project, Strand spent a lot of time analyzing, we've been measuring flow, looking at elevations, and they're actually proposing for low flow conditions, creating a, you won't notice them hopefully, but there's going to be three weirs that are going to allow the water to low flow conditions. We're going to create some false gradients, false hydraulic gradient through the site, so, because it's so flat, the culvert, through the culvert, it's between 83, there's, it's, it will be about a foot and a half. Um, but today it's literally nothing, so to prevent stagnation, um, the engineers have designed, um, physical features to basically create some of that, um, what we're going to call pools and ripples. Where we neck it down the creek a little bit, speed up the water a little bit, to keep it moving. Um, so, short answer is, we've intentionally designed things to look at all flows, um, from the lowest to the highest. Um, and designed the channel, um, A to be safe, um, but B to be attractive as well, some of the space from the long view. So yeah, there's been some very intentional efforts, um, to look at this channel, how it's going to operate, uh, hydraulically. So, is that answered the question?
I answered my question, I understand what you're putting, I know how to spell it, you're right, you still have to, actually, yes.
It's basically going to be a, uh, you know, the, the, the structure at the sawmill, where we can replace the boards, that's, that's a weird, okay? It's something where we create an edge for water to spill over, and we can fix that elevation, we will fix that elevation. To create some gradients at this, but the lowest flow situations, so you're going to continually have movement. Um, and without impacting anything upstream, this is a flood mitigation project. Um, so these are very small little things, uh, that are going to be installed intentionally to not create any bad water and flooding upstream, but to help move the water through the site, and both, we've had more conversation about low flow and high flow, yeah? And on the high flow, just to answer about high flow, like all of the use areas, we're very, we, we intentionally put those at the higher elevations so that we, so it's, we don't have flooding being through those areas, that happens in those, those kind of fortified areas that we showed, the outcropping stone and that really resilient landscape there, so that's very intentional. That's all I have here for you.
Thank you, trustee Mason?
I know we talked about this, the parking area, there's free money that we had, right now we're planning, maybe we'll put this power station at the cars. $70,000 for the state of Illinois, grants, unlimited money with the federal government. There is charging station for the vessel, ready to give, uh, disposable there. So, next, next year's part, I will, I will. So, I mean, we're in line to be for the state of Illinois, it just makes sense that we'll have to do this grant. What do you have? And then with that, probably all downtown business district as well, just a couple, three, even in our business department.
Thank you, Justin Peterson?
I was just wondering what we're going to do with the clock tower?
It's going to be, it's just going to be moved about 10 feet into a landscape bed on the same corner.
Okay.
Very prominent, still will be a feature.
Okay.
trustee Luther?
Okay. I have a couple of concerns, first of all, I love the plan, because it looks very, I want it done tomorrow. Now, that being said, another concern of the fire pits. And operation of, and some of these questions might not be something you can answer, but maybe you can. Operation of these fire pits, when they're operational or? Yeah, um, you know, the controls of those and so forth, obviously, the, I know you're, Kai answered some questions I had about the liability issue with fire pits and so forth. Um, but if you could expand on your views of these in other public arenas and how they've dealt with those. General issue, I mean, I might put these on the details, but what you do know, just the kind of fears and concerns I have about them.
Sure, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, we have used them in a number of different public situations, either in a street skate situation, but also in parks kind of like this. Um, it is a management issue, it does need to be addressed. Um, the one that we're doing in Bourbon A, for instance, we've talked a lot about it, it's the same concerns, right? Well, we have fire pits, they're in a public place, how are we doing it? Um, the, they're turned on, they're going to be turned on by one person from one location, say, the concession building. Um, so the gas is turned on from one location, each one has a shut off. Um, so if you want, if you want to turn it off, and if you want to use it, you go around, you hit the button, comes on for a period of time. Um, during certain hours, so they've established like, hey, we're going to do this from nine to four. And have that gas on, you can use them, and then we're going to turn it off and they're not going to be used. So they, they kind of like created their own rules. Um, so I, it's, it's kind of more about that, like how do you want to manage it? And we talked about a lot at the street committee level as well, just how, how do we want to manage those and who's doing it? Like that's ultimately what it would come down to. Um, you don't have to have them on all the time, they don't have to be complete, you know, free for all either. And we did it in South Bend, they were much more, we did it in Howard Park, it's a big park. They were much more lax about it, they had these things going, and there were people around them, and, and that was the way they kind of managed it. Now they did have more staff probably than you guys have, so that's a consideration.
Yeah, I mean, I, those are, there's, the fire pits is a lot of questions I have and how they operate. You know, you limit use to one bracket, you're taking over a fire pit for a full day. I mean, it, it becomes a managerial issue, like you're saying, and so the, the cost of those fire pits just goes through the roof. And now we're having to almost have someone that's a fire pit manager over there controlling fire pits. Um, but that being said, I, I love the way they look, I love the fire feature, I just think there's some work, we have to be behind the scenes in order to make sure that they're ran safely and properly. Another concern I had, or not a certain concern, a question is the furniture that you have in the plan for the, around the cafe, you know, the cafe tables and chairs. I believe, I can't remember who said something, one that put those chairs in the creek. But, and that is a concern I had as well, we, we talked about possibly using permanent furniture or something that cannot be moved. You've gone with the furniture that can be moved, is, is that a concern you've had in any other of your public parks?
It's, it's always a discussion, I, I'll, I'll be honest, like, I'm a big, I'm a big fan of the movable stuff. Uh, I just think it's, it creates that flexible space, say, in, in front of the cafe space you wanted to have. Like, if you wanted to rent it out and somebody had a party, whatever, there was some event, and you wanted to kind of, and you wanted to move those out of the way. Um, instead of them being bolted down, if they were bolted down, tables, um, and like kind of thinking table style or something. Um, it is, again, I see it as the same, people that are managing the fire pits would be managing that. Or if somebody's running the cafe, um, like, just like a coffee shop would at night, kind of take those, stack them, you know, lock them up. Um, you know, the hope to me is, the more eyes out here, the more people they out here, out here, the better. Um, and things like that won't happen, certainly in broad daylight. Um, you know, there's a sense of ownership, hopefully, and a sense of pride with the community, with the great new downtown open space. Um, you know, I know we've talked about it, and we've talked, we keep going back and forth on the steering committee. Um, so we're, you know, those are one of the elements, again, as Jim said, as we get into construction documents, like, and you guys decide, hey, really want something to be bolted down, super mounted, we, we can deal with that.
Other one is, and I, and if I missed it in the pricing document, I apologize. Is there anything built into this for security cameras on this property?
I'd have to, I know we have like 90 line items here, Mike.
If I, if I miss it, I apologize.
I think you probably do, I.
Not to add stuff to it, yeah.
Line item 95.
Yeah.
It's only $20,000.
Yeah, those, you're putting it in.
That, that would be a concern I have, is that we have to definitely have that moving forward. And then, uh, this question might be for Jim more than yourself, but if we approve this this evening, what flexibility do we have once the actual construction documents are drawn, we actually get final pricing, to make changes to either design aspects or the building or different features? Because if this starts getting, spinning out of control, I don't want to be locked into this because it's in this document. So I guess, how much flexibility do you have after, if we pass this tonight, what flexibility do we have on specific design future?
Well, the, the good news is, um, I'm not going to let it spin out of control, I'm not very good at this stuff. But you're the owners, you can design it, you know, to, you know, to the nines, and then say, wait a second. You, you, you reserve the right to change your mind. What that is, is inefficient, you know, that will slow the process down. Um, but yeah, the construction drawings are paper and ink, they can be changed, you know, we can, we can modify things. Um, I think it would be who us at this point to, you know, get all these kind of, I'm glad you were bringing up these things. So let's, let's try to get as many of these things, uh, sorted out now before we take it to, you know, this 30-page set is going to end up being ever 130 or two, 230 pages. So, you know, it becomes more difficult to, to change or pivot, um, but you always have that ability. If this, if we saw some, some items that were going, that were to be more expensive, you know, we can VE this, with value engineers. And we can, you know, certainly find ways to control the cost. Um, but I think, you know, from my review of the documents, being involved in the process and the cost estimate, I, I think we're on target, I'm not, if anything, I'm hopeful that some of these things can come in under some of these allowance. Some of the, this, this is the first time we have this, you know, cost that's kind of real and it's tied to drawings. You know, the first kind of cost estimates are more guess, this is less, less guesswork, but there are some items like the building, we'll put in an allowance on the page, it's not designed yet, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost. So some of these have some allowances and, um, but I will, I, I will say, I'm very comfortable where it's at. And I'm going to try very, very hard not to let this project creep.
I have no, just have a question. Trustee, trustee Berman?
Um, I think it looks great, um, I, I think everything flows well, I think we've really achieved that goal that you were looking for. And the only, the only question that I, I had was already answered, and it was called the clock tower.
Thank you. trustee Domenia?
Um, I have a couple of questions, one on the, uh, playground equipment a bit for that, what you've got here for us, that includes a conclusive.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And I think what I'm understanding you say is that if we decide later, we're going to do movable furniture, that's not part of the structure.
It's.
I mean, other than if you had to bolt it down, I guess, but.
It's, it's one of those easy elements, like, you know, there's certain, if you tell me you want to change the whole playground and it's bigger, all of a sudden, then that's a bigger change, right? But picking the, the furniture ultimately, or you say, look, we want it, has to be bolted down. And we've got months of preparing documents here, so we can, if you guys sign that, then we can read that to you.
Um, the other thing, and I know earlier in the meeting, the mayor recognized the work that's done on the tank. Um, you know, I think there were some people that had hoped that there might be something related to veterans here, which I know we can't start all over and maybe try and fit that in, because we can't do everything for everybody. But it seems to me that I remember a couple of years ago, there was a group that came together and wanted us to kind of consolidate all of our veterans' memorials in one spot. And not necessarily for this particular project, but I'm just bringing it up with staff, you know, support, to think about maybe across the street, we could create some type of a veterans memorial, do some fundraising for it, et cetera. So that if this is developed, that's something that people can also maybe sit and visit and, I think, recognize as a veteran, so. Not really germane to this, but I want to get that out for the record. The only other thing, and it won't come to surprise you, Kevin, that I have concerns about with this, I think it looks marvelous, I'm excited about it. I have concerns about the fact that people can walk down to the creek. Now, I know that if I go to Naperville and there's a river walk, and I go downtown and there's a river walk, and there's not a fence, then that's just, there should be a fence per se. But I also know that you can't go on the Chicago River Walk and sit on the concrete and put your feet in the water. You can't do it in Naperville, so my concern is that, is this going to potentially be an attractive nuisance? And are we going to have potentially somebody go into that water that we don't want in the water? And we think it's slippery, um, I, I'm really concerned about the fact that there are steps that go on the way down.
I, I have, I, you know, I, I know you can't put your feet in the water at the Chicago River, but if there isn't a railing, um, you go, you know, Louisville's a world-class park adjacent to the Ohio River, massive, huge, not a railing to be found. It's one of those clear impressive things, um, I have kids, I'd let them go down there. I, I, you know, we've talked about the flows, the engineers can talk about the flows of the water and, and that, so generally, it's pretty lazy, um, so if it, if it's something else to concern about a person that shouldn't be down there doing a nuisance type thing, and I think that's more, I kind of see that as a management thing, because that can happen to them doing anything, frankly. Um, and I don't, and we don't want to create this thing that, um, you have to hire people just to manage. But, um, when you make an investment like this, it is something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a liability issue, kind of, years ago before I moved here, apparently there was a tragedy at the sawmill. I guess I just would hope that we think through maybe now the road, that we do something, you know, that people can go down there and just take the rest. Those are all, and, um.
Thank you, um, can I say two questions? Uh, one kind of relates to what trustee Pierce said earlier, um, during the meeting, we had some discussion potentially, um, especially in the areas where there is, um, what almost be the gathering spaces where you set up, potentially adding some type of bollard system or movable bollards, is that something that, I, that's not in this estimate, correct?
No, but I, I don't think that, that, I mean, we just showed, we showed landscape, we showed walls.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, I think that was, that was it, otherwise, um, might not be in this, but also some kind of, um, grate system or grading system. So that the, um, underpass under, uh, Main Street here would be some kind of a grate or something that God forbid anyone ever did get into the water, that there'd be a safety feature.
There, there would be, yeah, there is. You wouldn't be able to see it, but there are two, two step-down junction boxes underneath that plaza on Main Street. And I think the opportunity, without it being unattractive, there'll be an opportunity to prevent somebody from getting into the culvert under Main. Um, that was a thought I had, so, I wanted to bring that up. But yeah, I think that would be a good idea to add, especially to trash rack, but in my mind, you know, it could save a life as well, so. But I, I wouldn't, there's an opportunity for that here.
All right, that's all I have, um, anybody else that'll go around again? Good, trustee Berman?
For the park, so that, just to clarify, that means that it is, the ADA is included?
Oh, yes, sure, yeah.
trustee Pierce? Um, one thing, it's a tension, also be, be considered, um, as we're doing our plantings around there, looking at stuff that's environmentally friendly and also helps encourage species like the monarch butterfly and stuff to be, actually come and visit our park there.
Absolutely, and that's why we're showing that, those native plantings all along that, all along the slopes. Creating that, creating some diversity back of bees, pollinators, birds, all those things.
All right. Ready to do this? Okay. Anything else, otherwise, uh, we'll call the move this board.
Harris?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. You too.
Next item on the agenda is item number twelve, consideration and approval of a resolution for a site plan approval for the construction of a parking lot for the Antioch Police Department at four twenty seven Orchard Street. Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-nine. Entertainer motion, second motion trustee Mason, second trustee Berman. Mr. Gergen?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. This matter comes back before the board. As you well know, we have been working with our engineer, HR green, on the actual specification for a new parking lot police department. Uh, this matter comes back before the board, and we call it, or did approve a variance back in June this year for to give, provide relief on the fence design. Because it's in form-based code. Yeah, now, based on the input of our engineers and the actual design, we're coming back before you so we can get this site plan actually approved, so we can receive the construction. Mr. Kime has been working with the engineers on the, the actual design. I believe Zashi gone out for bid, referred Mr. Kime on that. So we are finally in the position to receive construction, subject to getting the board's approval and site and review. So generally, again, some of the substance, the proposed parking lot is approximately less than half an acre. There'll be fifty new parking spaces. For security purposes, the parking lot would be fully enclosed with a security fence. There was extensive discussion about a, obviously a decorative fence along Orchard Street. We did, we do have specification in the drawings, it's on the last page. There will be basically a four-foot masonry brick wall, which will incorporate similar colors, key design as existing facade of the police department, so it'll match, will be cohesive unified design. That decorative fence, and on top of that will be a new decorative fence consistent with the security requirements of police department. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer the questions that they have.
Questions?
Uh, back to the decorative fence on the review for this out there. Did you say that would be like a four-foot rise and then a four-foot crack on top of that? Kind of auto-levated, cracked. The half will be masonry, the other half will be the extra fence. Okay, that's like fourteen, that won't stop nobody.
No.
Okay. The other question I have is you have option B in here, which is them also paving the existing parking lot. Does that still over into parts of the Methodist Church parking lot also, or just, just aren't actually police parking lot? It's just on the parking lot that we control and own in our mind. And what are we in, once we have this parking lot in place, what do we have to do about the agreement with Methodist Church?
It will, it will lapse. I can determine, so we'll stop, we'll paint on that, so.
Correct?
Any other discussion? Trustee Mason?
With the parking lot, we're going to be part of the contract, which is not signed. With the parking lot, once it's completed, it's going to be a movable gate, only those with the farm. Okay, I'm, I'm just saying, it's not, say if someone walks in, he's first to enter, there's still a mark on it. It's not probably signed.
They won't, we would certainly sign it.
Yeah, you gotta sign, you gotta sign. Especially if the pool's just, if you're just signed it. If you don't sign it, there's no power, there's no public practice.
Yeah, but they would have to sneak in, so again, again, it's gated, there is no way to walk into this thing without, you know, the police officer will notice if we, if they're not, but, but we should have to sign it.
If it's not signed.
Yeah.
Trustee Peterson?
Uh, my question was answered.
All right, this side, uh, now's the question, this time. Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Dominia?
No question.
All right. If there's no questions, I entertain a roll call.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the proposal for the police department parking lot expansion and repaving of the existing parking lot. Alliance contractors authorizing the mayor or his designated representative to enter into agreement for such work. The village maniac amounts of five hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-five. Need a motion in the second. Motion trustee Mason, second trustee Dominia.
So we put it out for bid with the alternates and the screening wall. Base bid, I think, came back at, it was five twenty-four, five twenty-seven, and then the front parking lot, we, we had another alternate that, that it went over a hundred thousand dollars to modify that parking lot. That exists in front of the building today. What it really needs to, just to replace the pavement, it just needs to be milled and first, called asphalt, that, that pavement is over twenty-something years old. So that, if we choose that alternate and just repave it, make it look fresh, we're at that five forty-seven hundred. We have a contractor that's willing to work on a pretty quick timeframe to get this in, yet this year. My new defense and landscaping will probably lead into next spring. The goal is to get a hard surface in this year, so we can move off the Methodist lot into this parking lot. So completion, you know, total completion, I believe, is June one, with a substantial completion of the parking service by, I believe, November first.
Questions, discussion? All right, then, roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Um, next item number fourteen is consideration and approval of a resolution regarding the release and non-release of certain minutes of executive session, resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-six. Motion trustee Mason. Second trustee Peterson. Any discussion regarding this matter? Not roll call, please.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Favorite, last item on the regular agenda, consideration and approval of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency related to coronavirus, ordinance number twenty-two dash oh nine dash five zero. I entertain a motion in the second, waving the second reading. Motion trustee Dominia.
Okay.
Second trustee Luther. Discussion. Trustee Pearson?
We received an email today from the governor's office, I believe it was, stating that there was another emergency order put in place for immigrants being delivered to the Chicago area. Does that include deliveries up here to Antioch from the local?
I have no information on anybody being delivered here. Thank you.
All right, any discussion about this ordinance, otherwise I entertain a roll call.
Here.
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Four voting yes, three voting no, motion carries. Administrator's report, do you have anything on their report? Okay, um, village clerk, any report?
Uh, this Thursday, I'm going to do a question for this coming up tomorrow regarding the circulation of petition packets for people until, if available, to be put up in the most first office on Tuesday, per se packets. I'm sorry, Monday afternoon and four by.
Thank you. Any trustee reports? Trustee Pierce?
I did receive an update from Mr. Hambro at the Public Works. I just recently, that's where they got up to totally the general goes on, ask the court to order for the rest of the village. And just for example, what Public Works is doing, they received eight hundred and fifty-six phone calls this month. They had two water main breaks, they replaced the pole, it sounds easy, but I watched them do it. They were having to have backhoes and all sorts of things, dig it out, pull out the old one, put in, they want to put gravel in, pack it down, make the rain this word, do blacktop, throw the top. So it's not an easy job. They went in the, the woods and replaced the pole sack, which is trying to get that themselves instead of us farming it out. They did tree trimming along the road base. They, they, you know, on Main Street, I mentioned it before, they watered the flowers. They put signage out for weightlessness for trucks. They, they pulled down a contract for repaving the bike path boat point, so that that could be repaved and try to keep more water off of it. There's a whole long list that Public Works does, and I think we should, if we see a Public Works guy, tell them, thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees?
And here. I have one thing to point out. You asked us, Philside and Lake Street, let's get the, the sink in again, it's a dangerous thing. People are avoiding that whole road, waving at the traffic, the normal traffic is there. We have a little pole tangent.
I will. And you do know that the Public Works handles have a Google app that you can run on your cell phone, you see a problem, you sign up for the e-Gov and tap it in there and you, and you make an application for a problem, you correct your, your building website and submit a report and a request, and then you'll get a tracking number and you'll see what the status of it is, so. Thanks for reminding me of that, that word out.
Trustee Peterson?
I've spoken to Jim Kime about this, but in, with the event of, of Mike Haley's sign for Haley Street, the new Haley Street, it occurs to me that there is a Toft Avenue and Wilton Avenue and, uh, there's more, Rendear Road, they were all mayors. And Cunningham, yeah, all of them. I think they should all, people should know who they were and put those signs up, uh, like there is on Haley Street, just so that people, you know, the Raymond P. Tom Street, I mean, they're not the wrong sign, right? Yeah, I think that would be a nice thing for people to know.
And thinking about that, I, I do think it's a good idea, I would probably freshen up both signs.
Right.
You know, some of them are older signs.
I agree.
I'd want them to look nice, but I, I think it's a good idea, it, it kind of goes along with our character to, you know, point that out, I think it adds, it adds another, you know, it's, yeah, another thing to our charming downtown.
Yeah.
Throughout the village, so if the board has no objection, I'll just make that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Other trustees?
Dominia?
Oh.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. The, you're going to see planting being done the end of this month on Toft Street. In the islands that are in the parking lot here, the lights are up in downtown on Main Street. And we are still getting pricing and information on how to do the crosswalks. But we're not going to, the recommendation of the committee is that to not do that until the spring, because by then now, and then you get the snow and that, so that, that'll happen. All right.
All right, thank you. And as an aside, what is the date that the coast sites that were doing the painting downtown?
Uh, I, I don't have anything definite yet.
Okay.
My goal is to have them, an unveiling ceremony right around the time, right before Harvest Fest.
Okay, this year though, still?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So you'll see another painting happening on the walls of the buildings downtown this year, so. All right, with that, um, I entertain a motion to adjourn in the second. Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Here.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty, we'll return for the committee hall meeting at seven forty-five. Call the meeting to order for the committee of the hall meeting, it is seven forty-six PM, roll call.
Present.
Here.
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 Present. All trustees are here, first item on the agenda is the approval of the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two committee of the hall meeting minutes and present, as presented, you have a motion and a second. Second trustee Mason, second trustee Luther, roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Mayor report, nothing to report other than that I am all the Illinois Municipal League Conference this weekend, so I'll be attending that with some of the staff members and trustees. Any assistance wishing to address the board at this time? Otherwise, I'm going to move on to the regular business, which is, the first item is discussion regarding the Antioch Theater. I believe Michael Gergen's here, as well as Mr., Mr. Downey as well.
Thank you, your honor. This matter comes before you for an update on the Antioch Theater, as we call. For a number of months, the village discussed the sale of the Antioch Theater and Mr. Downey's requested an opportunity to come before the village board, provide a board update, in a slightly different direction that Mr. Downey's taking with the sale of the theater. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Downey to provide a, just a quick update and presentations to the village board.
Thank you, Michael. Sorry to have to come to you again about this. So just a quick recap, for personal reasons, I need to sell a theater, had it for over seven and a half years, it's been a joy having, but I need to sell a theater, no, but I want to do so in a responsible way, and do everything I can and try and keep it a theater. So originally, I came before you with the proposal of the ticket tax concept, village providing financing. The village, I respect your decision, decided it wasn't appropriate use of public funds for appropriate risk, would have regular financing in this environment, post-COVID, without operating history for the theaters is not available. It needs to get several years of history under its belt, again, to go out to get financing. So in order to keep it a theater, the only way to do it is for me to step in on an interim basis as the lender and take on that lending risk. And so, in a previous buyer that I worked with for many, many months, and who you met and, and her business plan was presented and it was great. But for, uh, while leading up to your vote on the ticket tax, some actions were not being done that started to raise concerns. I reached out to the, the buyer, I reached out to the village expressing those concerns, but we move forward and you pass the tax. Post-tax approval, essential steps were not being taken in order for the buyer to execute the sale. Critical applications with studios were not being, were not submitted and want to be respectful here, and it would just raise tremendous concerns about me stepping in as the lender about viability of this borrow, borrower to operate this business. And if there's, the business plan is great with special events, but the core day-to-day business, the core day-to-day profitability of the theater will be the movie business. And if there isn't a buyer that can execute those core day-to-day activities, then it won't be a successful business. And my loan is an unacceptable risk. So those events, and then just, just in occurrence at the eleventh hour, told me that this is just an unacceptable risk for me personally with regards to my loan, and raised my concerns as, you know, in my, in my passing off this to a buyer who will have the, the skillset to operate this as a successful theater going forward. So I made the decision to not move forward with the transaction. There is a backup buyer who is here tonight, Michael Sheedy. Michael and his wife and his family have been in Antioch for almost ten years. Michael will introduce himself and explain his plan, but what Michael is, is demonstrated is that he will, doing a football and analogy, he will do the blocking, it's actually necessary to have a successful team. And he will grow into the special event business once he firmly establishes the continued profitability of the movie theater as a movie theater. So that's what's happened, and I'm sorry that things didn't work out with the previous buyer again. So that's what's happened. I'm sorry that things didn't work out with the previous buyer again. And having to step in as a lender, it's an unacceptable risk for me. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'll introduce Michael Sheedy.
We'll hear Mr. Sheedy's presentation. Good evening. So like Mr. Downey said, I've held the data for about ten years and actually known business for some past. And perhaps two financing projects. Been a resident of Antioch for about ten years. Been in the area for about twenty-five years. Got experience in the inflation technology field as well as some public safety field. So over the last couple of weeks, I've talked with Tim, that presented itself. And we're working on moving forward with purchasing the theater. Is our intent to, as I discussed with George Stapp previously, to learn the business, understand how the movie industry works. That is the daily bread and butter of the business. Once we get comfortable with that, we'll look at special events and those types of things in the future. Certainly involved with village events. We've got some coming up with ghost tours, the wine place and those types of things, which I'm already involved in. Even though we haven't taken orders. But certainly looking forward to the opportunity. Appreciate the board's support. I'm going to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Are we, when we pass the, we didn't agree to. Ticket tax. But what did we agree to? I think finish on that.
Okay.
We agreed to.
Okay.
Did we tie that to when the majority, we tied it to the. Personal.
Oh, sorry, I'll get these down. The agreement was personal in nature. So it was tied to them. So we'd have to redo it with Mr. Sheedy. Or is it tied to Mr. Downey? No, it's. It's tied to part of both, it's tied to part, it's both. Right, so you'd have to, you'd have to change it because while one party is still in place, the formal under. The end user operator borrowers, it would, this was a personal under, so it would have to be adjusted.
Just amazing. Trustee Peterson.
So you have never been in the theater business before. And you're asking us to. Pass that ticket tax for you.
Well, at this point, this is an introduction. The next step would be to amend the ticket tax. That's named previously.
And are you going into this with a partner or are you just buying this?
It's a family venture.
It's a family venture. Okay. So would we be, are you asking us to have a ticket tax draft, a ticket tax ordinance for you and another person? This wouldn't be tied to another person, only you? Okay.
Just to be clear, if I may, trustee chair. The tax is a tax of applicability to the end user. It would be a reimbursement agreement that would be amended based upon that. I just want to make clear the text and tie it to any individual person.
Okay.
Trustee Bluthard, you basically just answered my question. It sounds like nothing changed the ticket tax ordinance that we passed is in place that would not have to be altered. Would be the reimbursement of the tax to seller or the seller, right? So reimbursement to seller, not. So I mean. I'd have to, I didn't, it wasn't in Minnesota looking at it at Jensen's anymore. I mean, as long as that's just being changed, I don't have a problem.
I'll see, permit.
I don't.
Trustee Devania.
Since this is your first foray into the theater business, Mr. Downey, will you be helping with Mr. Sheedy to make sure that. Things continue as they have and that the theater is viable?
My commitment is hopefully, you've seen over the last seven plus years, is the long-term viability of the theater. So as long as it takes, as much time as it takes, I will make sure that there is a completely comprehensive supportive head of. As long as. I promise you.
Thank you. We did have one individual sign up, Ms. Monti, to, if you want to speak about this matter.
Hey, everybody.
And you all know, she should tell us her name.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I'm Monti.
We just where you reside.
And I. You all know how passionate I am about the theater and I wanted to come here today just to have a say to, out of respect. Because we did spend a lot of time, almost seven months, working together, trying to get this deal done. And out of respect for all the time that you guys did, the staff did, all of us did. In crafting this deal, that was a three-party deal, it was between the village, it was between cameras, between me. And I made a promise to the village that I was gonna not only run it as a movie theater, that was never. Not an option. It was always gonna be run as a movie theater, but also to create more dynamic events that we bring to this village and to the town of Antioch. I started working with all the downtown business owners and trying to bring. The whole idea was to bring more people to the downtown to not only be successful for the theater, but to be successful for the restaurants, the shops and everything else. I present, over the seven months, I built trust, I did presentations, I gave you guys my ideas. And this whole thing was crafted because of that hard work and the seven months that we put into this together to make this thing a reality. And that's how that three-party deal came up. And it took a lot of work from all of us. You know, I take this very seriously and I was really heartbroken and devastated when Tim. Basically pulled the rug up under me. I, you know, with the things that he's saying, could have been resolved with a simple phone call. There was nothing that I was ready, willing and able to close then. I was ready and I'm ready, willing, able to close now. There was never an issue that I wasn't able to close and we never really, he never called me, we never had a conversation. There were some things that he brought up, but it was nothing that was so devastatingly. I don't even know. Honestly, I'm flabbergasted and heartbroken myself. I don't know how we got to this point. And I apologize if I'm bringing this back to you, but, you know, I don't even know myself why, why there was the trust broken. It could have been a simple conversation on the phone, it could have been a cup of coffee, it could have been something just to bring this all together.
Excuse me, the clock is not ticking and I believe this is public time.
Yeah, I don't have to. All right.
As. As we know, this is going to take a lot of work and it's going to take the right person, the right creativity. You know, the movie business is already an existing movie business. The theater runs as an operating movie business now in the black. But it's gonna take.
Thirty more, thirty more seconds.
Okay.
No, sir, clock.
So I don't give up easy. That's why I came here today and I wouldn't give up easy on this business. It's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a challenge to run it. And, you know, I spoke to the movie booker and, you know, he said, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of movies, good movies coming out in the fall and the winter. But, you know, this is a great opportunity for the village to have something dynamic and wonderful for the town of Antioch. And I'm here to say that I'm still committed to that project and I'm still. Wanting to make it something dynamic and I'm ready, willing and able to close and I always was. So I, I don't know, I feel like Tim and I, there should be some type of conversation or some support from the. Board to keep the program the way we had it, that we worked seven and eight months for.
We have a three minute.
That's what, yeah, that's what. I'm asking for a clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any questions?
I don't need any questions. All right. Any discussion based on any of the other items that were brought up in this matter? Certainly based on maybe as far as. Bringing this back to the board, with the discussion regarding this.
I think at the next board, we can bring on actually the actual reimbursement three-party agreement. Based on our consultation, it'll be the board's prerogative at that point to discuss it further and decide if they want to approve that agreement or not. Unless I hear otherwise.
Yeah, can you send it, yeah, circulate that in advance?
Yes, we'll certainly draft an agreement between the village, Mr. Downey, Mr. Sheedy. And at that point, the village will have the opportunity to review that agreement. It's the best direction you want to go.
At this point, would it make sense to wait until they actually close the deal before we adjust it again? Are we taking the risk of having to do a third time, a third deal? I mean, the business side of this is a personal matter between. The seller and the buyer. We don't have anything to do with that. The only thing we're doing is reimbursing the. The tax. So until that transaction is completed, should we wait until that, do that or should it be the current owner right now until he actually closes? Amended to the new one?
My recollection was, I think, my recollection, Mr. Downey, correct me if I'm wrong, is that Mr. Downey requested that that be approved, the reimbursement agreement. Before he actually closed the purchase of, maybe I'll allow you to go ahead and speak to that.
Sure, what I need, however structured, what I need to know is that there will be a reimbursement agreement. In place that, that the change in the buyer will, will not. Prevent the ticket tax, the reimbursement agreement. And, and going another couple of weeks without that direction. We can waste a lot of time and money working toward a closing and then take this forward and, and trustees decide or decide. That no, we're not going to give it to this new buyer. So I would appreciate some direction now if for whatever reason. There obviously, your train shaking your head.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. Whether, whether this new buyer scenario is acceptable, otherwise we're wasting our time and I go down a different sale path. It's that simple. I have one option on the table, this buyer, I just have to this buyer or if this is unacceptable for every reason, then I go down a different sale path.
Trustee Pierce has a question or comment?
I don't have a question, I got a comment from the board. I appreciate Mr. Downey's situation. I appreciate Mr. Downey's situation and Mr. Sheedy's situation. I believe this is a discussion between private parties that needs to take place. It's on the village's position to get involved in private sale, private stuff. Other than the fact that we're reimbursing, so anything that's going on out there at the sale, I don't think is our position to answer it.
Well, the only thing is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, sir. Additionally, to ask for a decision or direction tonight, I don't think is correct because we just received this. This is also a committee of the whole before we cannot make decisions.
Absolutely. All right. Trustee, you're absolutely correct. You're not in a position to receive this. I also believe that at least two of the trustees asked to have the documents circulated for review at this point in time. So we're really not in a position to take final action as to finding the open meetings act to see. We gotta know this is going to be a pending litigation. Between all parties. So we're not standing on wheels to pending litigation on prior transactions.
My opinion. Correct me if I'm wrong, when we passed the tax. Ordinance. The theater tax, entertainment tax, to keep the theater running and moving. It wasn't necessarily who was buying it, it was only one of the theaters that's going. We didn't want to get involved in selling or taking on mortgage of the theater. And this kind of is a very good indication of why we shouldn't have done that. I'm glad we didn't at this point. But the overall agreement of the board was to allow that ticket tax to go to. The theater, which would, to me, means whoever buys it. But I think, I can only speak for myself, but I think it's fair to say that regardless of who purchases the theater, that ticket tax would go to them. And I think that's what you're asked to print. So unless the members of the board that would be against it at that point, I guess, we should. So if he's looking for direction, I mean, that's, as far as I see it, that's the way we did it, but if I'm interpreting wrong, so.
The very, the very. Very.
Yeah, I concur with trustee Bluthard. And I know that we can't take final action, but certainly we've been at a number of many of the whole meetings where we've. Discussed a consensus about whether or not we should move forward. So we could do that, give Mr. Downey and his potential buyer a sense of whether or not we would do this. Obviously, it's not a final decision, but if, if this group tonight, and I'm not thinking I want to do that. That's a message to them. Obviously, it's not a formal call. And we've done that, that.
My recollection is correct. I believe the ordinance is just strictly based on dollars and cents. Promise money coming back on the tax. And I think that the only thing that needs to come back here would be an amendment of the rebate. For just. I, I, I say that we move this manner to our next regular business meeting for the amendment discussion. And for two weeks.
So there's now an opportunity for a piece, the temperature reading of consensus.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm going to stay. So I guess.
I'm fine with, with moving forward, moving forward with it. I'm not saying tonight that we go forward.
Oh, yeah, I'm not.
So, yeah, I have no objection to it. I mean, your personal dealings, your personal dealings. The issue before us would be whether we change the name on the document, which. Most, that name is something that if someone on the board has a problem with it, there's only that else. Yeah, I don't see that. I don't speak for the board, I speak for myself.
Take it all there. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, second item on the committee of the hall meeting, which is. The request regarding license plate reading cameras. We have Mark Tarkowski from New Haven here. There's some, some information distributed to the board members.
Yes, how's it going? I did pass out some.
All right, just for the record, just say your name.
Mark Tarkowski was an innovative.
Tell them it's dark at five.
Just in flight, I checked out. Yeah. Speaking of me and Jim, this is in our package, the display on the. I did email them to Jim last night. I just got the packet. I actually, I actually tried to get Flock here, the vendor, but I was told I cannot have under here. So I got all the handouts from them. It's all briefly go over.
Sure, and we talked about, I think, for time purposes, I think, a five-minute or so presentation.
That's fine.
Get the fever, the temperature of the board on it, so.
So, Jim, he has, he gets sent out to everybody, everyone's digital copy. So I just wanted to come here really quick. Good presentation on the park, you know, it was a multimillion dollar park, but. Our security, you know, and, and security of this neighborhood and Antioch, we're not gonna have taxpayers. Like you could, you could tax them like two ways, residents and businesses. We don't have businesses in Antioch, we have residents, so we have to take care of the residents. There's been a growing concern in New Haven particularly with break-ins of cars for years. And especially with the new governor's order, January first, I feel it's gonna get a lot worse with what he's gonna do with. Letting people out of jail and it's gonna be a mess. So we need to start protecting our neighborhoods. My parents are in Hoppin Estates, all the, all the subdivisions there, Palatine, Hoppin Estates, Barrington, Chomper. Everyone has these cameras. It's a standard out there. It's becoming a standard. We have Club Lives, Red Army and. It in pre, actually have Flock system cameras right now, online in production. So I won't go over the white papers there that everyone has. I'll just kind of go over the deck really quick. So this is a company called Flock Security. They specialize in license plate readers. And we focus on just license plate. Of cars coming in this subdivision. The main thing, it's really important, is they have hollers that, and I don't count all the details. We can have it under here if we want to talk more about details, I'll summarize it here. Basically, there's hollers, real technical words, when a car is stolen or identified, it's gonna, it's gonna do a red holler to the police department and they could dispatch a police there. The chief is actually gonna talk about, a couple of weeks ago, in, in Red Wing, they actually got a red, a holler for. The chief is actually going to talk about, a couple of weeks ago, in, in Red Wing, they actually got a red, a holler for stolen car. Someone had broke into a garage during the day, middle of the day, in New Haven. They went to Red Wing, and the police dispatched the police, and they got, and I think, I don't think that, they got the car. He could tell more about that. Yeah, but, um, this is a tool to help the police, it's not going to prevent anything. Again, there is not really any other good tools out there that I've seen that are, have good spots. New Haven is a very populous subdivision, we're right off 173, we get all the track from Kenosha, Washington, Zion, and we get, I mean, there, there was a car in the pond over the weekend in our subdivision. I mean, there was a car in the pond, we had a car in our sign, at our entrance a few weeks ago, there's all these reports. We have very high traffic rates, where they close the subdivision off, and we get everybody from the subdivision. Red Wing has cameras, Clublens has some cameras in the park, which I don't know if they have in the park, but, um, you know, we just need to have better security, this is one solution I thought of, that, that a lot of people in New Haven too, would like more security in New Haven. Residents, they cannot come today, I don't want to fill up the, the meeting today with everybody, so I figured I'll, you know, ask some feedback, and a lot of people like to say, yeah. So you kind of see here, they're based in Atlanta, Georgia, but they got, they have cameras, cameras everywhere. Eleven Lake County, they've got, they've got Flock cameras, and so, seven to hundred, seven to nine hundred times a day. They have thirty retention on their data, they could talk, they have cloud and Azure systems, so it's all secure data. However, it's a First Amendment, I could sit on the sidewalk, take video of all the cars going by, and know it's a stop. It's a First Amendment, right? I could videotape anything on this sidewalk, hundred percent, so there's, anyone can take a picture of your car. But they don't sell the data, et cetera, so you can read everything. You'll see some examples, there are some license plates, these cameras focus just on license plate. Your, your doorbell cameras are useless at night, you can't even, or even during the day, you can't pick up a license plate on the street, even at night. Unless someone's right in front of your door, the, the cameras are basically useless, the doorbell cameras. You have to have very expensive cameras to catch a license plate on the street, they will not catch it. The nice thing about this system is that everything, they, the, the police could sit in, in, in the office and they could, yeah, research everything. Just really quick, you can monitor some light poles, et cetera, they're all solar panel. Bottom line is, they're super cheap, twenty-five hundred bucks a day, we're proposing two to New Haven.
A year, right?
A year. Yeah, twenty-five hundred bucks a year, so we have, what did I say? He said, hey.
Those were expensive. I'll watch your inventory, buddy.
Twenty-five hundred bucks a year per camera, so, New Haven, we're just saying two at the entrance, Red Wing has actually three. So that would, you're, you're talking about seven hundred houses being protected by these cameras, so. If you guys did have any questions, you could ask, the chief has anything to talk about cameras? I did talk to him, I, I know I talked to the trustees about it already, all of your buddies. I don't know if the chief has any questions or comments, but.
I'll let the trustees ask any questions, so, just go around and see if anybody has any questions or comments or directions, so. On this side of the die, so anybody have any?
Mr. Kai, how many subdivisions do we have in New Haven? There's twenty-seven, twenty-seven subdivisions, and most of them have one entrances. Some are interconnected, so maybe there's not that many. So, this, this is my concern on this, Mr. Tarkowski, is Clublens, Red Wing, Hidden Creek, some of the examples in here appear to be self-financed, they're all paying for their security cameras in their neighborhood. Clublens has the ability to pay where they, they decide to. I get, I get nervous when we start off with a cheap project, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a camera, it's lying down on the roof. Your subdivision, I guarantee you, as soon as we pay for yours, we're going to be paying for Clublens, we're going to be paying for Hidden Creek. Aaron Harbor's going to be here, Trevor Creek's going to be here, because I know you guys get hit more than anybody else because you're the closest to the hallway, but those thieves tend to rotate around and pick on each neighborhood. So, it can, it concerns me if I'm picking and choosing subdivisions. I don't, I don't think that would work very well, I'd start a riot. I, I could concur with possibly placing some of the main entrances into the village, so if somebody's coming into the village, they get, there's some sort of alert, I think that may be affordable and may be a reasonable compromise to keep the, the natives with the pitchforks away from the door here. So, I, I would be willing to get main entryways of the village. The only concern I have with that is, there's a high incident of stolen cars with stolen license plates that happen to be reported deaths that are, that are involved with these crimes, so, then we'd be spending money uselessly. I mean, I, I know they, they've got great statistics here, but they're usually smart, they know how to get around this stuff. So, I'm, I'm willing to look at protecting the village, I'm not willing to pick, look at picking and choosing one subdivision over the other, because I know Open House has two entrances, no, three, so, there's three there, yeah. So, Happy Estates has two, I mean, every, every subdivision's going to want these, so.
Yes, so let me just, so, my, my suggestion is to do a trial period, and I understand, I, every subdivision wants it, but you get to look, look at, go through, what subdivision has the highest front? I don't have the, I actually asked the chief that, I, I don't have that, I think it's the limit, I, I don't have it. So, my suggestion is, look at trial period, and you get to start somewhere. Again, the tool is not going to solve the problem, you have to start somewhere, especially gaining first, I mean, you're going to have to start somewhere to. That, so, that's my, my, my suggestions on it. I know everyone, if they're going to do it, but you've got to start somewhere, because it's a problem.
Any discussion on this side of the?
Yeah. Trustee Mason. So, is there a way to sell funds by ordinance? To, if we pinch these people with these cameras, we could ordinance the money to pay for camera systems?
So we would, I just.
But you know, I do, I think, if you don't know where I'm going.
Yeah, I do, and I wanted to check, the first thing I want to think about is, that's limited to the world. That's my first thought, because.
I, I don't know.
That's why I got to look into.
And then I'd like, you know, I would love to hear a presentation to get the statistics from this company, to sit there and say, okay, are your statistics true to the fact? You know, because the, there is a need, there is a need to protect, we have the fiduciary responsibility to protect our citizens. So if there is a tool out there, we should, we should be getting information, and listen to these people. So, that's the one thing, is there a way to sell funds? And, and you know, Aaron Harbor's got three, you know, then we got different sections, but, you know, that's the first step we got to look at. And to get their presentation, maybe there's brand money up there, so, or these would be.
Trustee Peterson?
You mentioned that Red Wing has cameras?
They have, so, they have, well, they're, we can touch base on them, so, HOAs are really not supposed to be policing subdivisions, they're supposed to be worried about landscaping, the rules and regulations, so that's why it's not really the HOA's responsibility to do this. However, they have, they have one inbound and outbound on seventy-three, and since we did not give it a third one, it's burner, they're protected all around, they're, they're like, they're protected, I mean, anyone going in that subdivision.
Who pays? Who pays?
The HOA.
Okay.
But as I said, like, HOA rules are, there's nothing written in, in the declarations or rules that HOAs are supposed to police, like, cars coming in, that's not, like, it's, it's public land, the road, the road is owned by the village, not by the HOA. All the sidewalks are public land, that's not HOA law.
Anything else over here?
First question for Jim, do you know if we have anything, and, and I don't believe we do, in the, in the police budget for cameras?
No, we do not.
Has that ever been brought up in the past, or, I don't believe it was.
I think we've had some internal discussions, and we actually know of Flock. We're aware that, you know, Red Wing has them, they, they talk to us, we saw a presentation from Flock. But, what, what we saw, staff wasn't compelled to move forward with a project or break something, a budget or do anything like that. This discussion really is, do you want a, you know, I think you could boil it down to, do you want a plate reading system here in the village? And do you want to pay for it? Certain subdivisions have decided they want, they want that, so the, the pilots are reacting. Red Wing's had a trouble here. I think it's resulted in one, ha, you know, situation where, you know, it aided law enforcement. So, I guess, you know, if you want staff to look into plate reading systems, we should run a process, look at what's out there, see what the costs are, see what it looks like, budget for it, you know, if it's something you want to do, we can do that.
I have a question for trustee Mason, in the insurance industry, if the village has these readers, you know if that impacts homeowners' insurance at all?
No. No, they, no, it's all based on ISO codes. But they, they do, they do make these, which aren't part of this, they do make older ones that they, they're on squad cars. Lake County have one, right?
Yeah. And then the Palm State.
Yeah, the sheriff's office at one point was part of the federal task force, auto, auto task force, see funding for numerous LPRs on squad cars, they've since separated from that, that group. They have one meeting recently, but they're not going to be there. Who's this going to ask?
Chief, I'm going to stay up there, I have a couple of questions.
You could, you could, you could ask.
In, in regards to what you've referred to, there was one instance in Red Wing where his assistants, have, do you have any information from your, these channels, or the, from other villages having success with these readers, and either preventing or catching the, the individuals?
It's, it's kind of a two-part answer, really. Are they beneficial to law enforcement? Yes, it's another tool in our tool bank, it's going to help us try to address crime. But, oftentimes, there's always a lag in information, questions come up of, even when these cameras are installed, who's going to monitor them? Right? You know, Flock, for example, they've been in place for a year, there's real no, no real seamless integration into our system. That's a, that's a public, I'm sorry, a private project, right? So they don't, they're not integrated directly into our system. So they rely on whether or not an officer decides they want to install an app on their personal cell phone, or whether or not they want to log into a website to monitor that, which doesn't do any good because it's in the car. Officer's already at their four, getting a cup of coffee, that sort of thing. It can be forty-five minutes before they come back and see that hot bird, bird came through, so, I, I think there's probably other options out there to consider. Flock, I think that Red Wing really is private, that's just HOAs.
So, so there are other, obviously, there's other companies that sell these installers, systems that, as a, if you have the resources, then you would prefer over Flock?
I, I would have to look into it, I've had some conversations, some part brought this up, I've had some conversations with other colleagues, and I think Zion has implemented some of these, these Flock systems, they, they've installed one kind of, while Mr. Aircraft discussed it, in the key locations of the village. And since that's their system, the integration's a little bit different. I also know, I'm totally recently installed, a, a system of LPR systems, they looked at Flock, they chose not to afford them, they wanted to better, they thought it was a more robust or advanced system, so, just like any other piece of technology, there's pros and cons, some are more expensive than others, but we have to sit down and really determine what, what the goal is at the end of the day, how much will we spend? And what the, what the, what the rewards would be. Mr. Kai's right, a lot of the, a lot of these things, we have, talking back to Red Wing, these Flock cameras, trying to obtain information for a crime that occurred, finding the car, what we're seeing, you know, a stolen car, not yet reported stolen, riding in and out of the subdivision. Also, there's some value to that, some descriptions and some, some helpful information, but, it's, I wouldn't want to say it's a magic bullet, it's going to solve all of our problems.
No, I think if it was, we'd already have, but, then just my, just my last comment would be, Mark, and, and to these HOAs is, I mean, obviously, this is something we need to talk about, I, I personally am in favor of it, I don't know where the resources come to pay for it, but, you believe, like, your HOA or others might just sit in some type of cost sharing with the village where it's, it's, in order to, 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 like, what trustee Pierce said, where we're going to snowball in every other subdivision, but if HOA wanted to come to us and ask for our assistance in the project, that might spread out what winnings we have available, if you guys were willing to chip in a portion as well, in order for us to, to install these and have them operational.
Yeah, so I'll mention the president of New Haven too, I'm not representing that, I'm just representing as a resident, I, I could ask the board, but I think before I bring up these props to the board, we would have to actually kind of buy in from the board that says we would potentially do this, I just want to bring up something that.
No, I'm not trying to lock you in, I'm just, I'm just snowballing ideas, I, I, because, I love the idea of having them, but it's a matter of coming up with the money to pay for them, and then how do you do it, and how do you do it fairly with the others?
Here's my thing, yeah, so, anything's possible, my question would be is, when, when a car gets broke, these, these are becoming more aggressive, it would be coming in the middle of the day in the garage, going through your drive, going through your car. My, my question is, what's the cost for building residents, like, isn't safety number one, and number two is, you know, it's just, to me, it's a low cost, and it's free. Regarding the, I asked Flock about the LPRs on the highway, they didn't choose Flock, because, Flock was a load, they chose a more expensive solution, HOA's, like, they did this all roll cameras or something, but they're, they're a lot more.
I, I mean, I, I think it's something we have to look at, and if we can find the resources, we can do it even more, more specifically, but.
I'm just.
Yeah, there's got to be grants, there's got to be other ones to do that, but I know it's, no, not, it's not a one-time cost, and that's the issue, if we put it out one time, then we're going to have it every year.
So my question would be is, to, to, to the police department, when they do an investigation, go to cameras and walk around the neighborhood, how much, how many, how much in tax dollars are we spending on the investigation, the reports, the analysis, you're talking about five, ten thousand bucks in taxes in crime between all administrations of the police, you're going to cut that down, you're, it's going to be actually saving money, the taxpayer money, by giving these cameras, because the, the investigation time will go down, because you'll have all the information, we're going to look for more of these cameras, you just have right on your app, they pull up information, it'll save money, I just want to.
Is there, so you, you had stated that pretty much it was a general, overall, pretty much everybody was on board with that?
I'm like I said, everybody, there's always people that, and, but here's, here's my argument to that, you know, it's a First Amendment, I could, again, I could stand on that sidewalk and videotape everything, I could record it, and I could do a live stream, no, no one can stop me, nothing. So, my, my opinion is, it's a First Amendment, right, and you want to do that, so.
And then, would you say that everybody in the subdivision, I mean, were they aware that you were coming out here saying?
I did, well, I did, first off, I don't ever, I don't talk on Facebook, I don't have the time, stop to put this on Facebook, I don't, I just still, I got my, my Facebook tag, so I lost it in this topic, I did call a few people, they just didn't make it.
Okay, I, because, you know, I, I'm just concerned, I, you know, I think everybody should, yeah, you know, they should be given the opportunity to be able to say whether or not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I could tell you the thing, so I talked to a person that got broken into during the day in the middle of her garage, her car, someone walked in her garage, and she, she wanted to come back, because she was kind of, and she was totally on board after this happened, so after something like that happens to, what an in-text theory to, yeah.
I, I just, like I said, I just.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean.
Something that I definitely think that is.
I'm just not going to go on Facebook. Because I don't want to deal with all the, people don't, people respond on there without knowing all the information. So I just don't, I'm not going to go on. Just have a minute.
Um, I have a couple of comments on this. First of all, it's my understanding, and maybe you clarify this, and it kind of tags onto what trustee Herman was saying. Is that your subdivision decided that they did not want to pay for this?
We did have the funds at the time.
And so. The information that I had, in addition to not having the funds, was that people did not want, people to feel that there was a crime problem in their neighborhood.
Everyone knows that.
So I think to trustee Herman's comment that it would be good to get some additional feedback. From residents about this. I personally. Am concerned that if we have twenty seven subdivisions, and even if we say there's one and a half entrances per subdivision. You're talking a hundred thousand dollars a year for these cameras, which I would like perhaps in the future. A more thorough presentation from the chief about the pros and cons of this. Because I do believe that it's, would not be correct to have them in your subdivision and nobody else's. So I think that is something that we're going to have to discuss as well. A question that I have is if the cars that are coming in. Have not yet been reported as stolen. And how does the police determine which car was responsible for the break-in? That's just a, a question that I would ask the chief in the future to answer. And I don't know all the statistics, but my understanding is when we get the reports on these break-ins, it's because people are not locking their doors. And so for us to spend a hundred thousand dollars, maybe there's a way that we could spend less money educating people as to the importance of locking your doors. Because, I mean, chief, off the top of your head, ninety percent are, are people that don't lock their, their doors? And so if, if people know that there are people in your neighborhood, Tiffany Farms this happens in because of coming off of North Avenue. If people aren't locking their doors, what's? I, I really struggle with that. So chief, I don't know if you, I mean, I'm asking the chief if you could just speak to how many of these break-ins are?
Yeah, this problem is regional. Certainly, it's not just plaguing Antioch, but overwhelmingly, it's, it's a preventable crime. I've been policing Antioch now for pushing twenty four years. I could probably count on my, on my hands, the number of forced entries. Vehicles we have, the overall majority have that, have that. Unlocked vehicles throughout that time. Nothing has changed in the, in most recent months we've had. In the last couple of years we've had. Coming out, we've had any broken windows or picket locks or something. That's certainly, it's all unlocked.
And I know the cameras are, are kind of in vogue and there's a place for cameras. But I'm just not sure, and I have to think about it some more. Do I want Antioch to be known as a place where you have to have cameras under something? And what message does that send? And that's my own personal, I'm not. I'm in on that. Question that I have to think through. Must be expensive, a hundred thousand dollars a year. And I'd like to get a better sense from the chief, maybe in the future, as to what kind of return on investment do we get?
You know, you, you do bring up a very valid point, trustee. You know, any certain issue like this, there's, is the. Watchful eye debate. I know those concerns. Through what, Red Wing's process, New Haven, it debated it a little bit a year ago or so. You know, there's, while there's definitely public safety advantages, there's always concerns over privacy and access and how that information is going to be used. Especially when, you know, it's, it's private venture settings, HOA. While law enforcement has access to the cameras for the law enforcement related purposes. The administrators on each wayside also get login keys that they don't get the same information, speaking of they have the ability to review some of these cameras. So and Mr. Jones wants to know what time's Mrs. Jones is coming home at night, that sort of thing. There's always those privacy concerns that come into play. Every person thinking that is going to support these things, likely we have some people who have privacy concerns as well.
That's another good point that I hadn't thought about is just people driving through Antioch knowing that their license plate is being recorded. I have to think about it, but at this point, I would like to get more. Data and more information if we decide to move forward with this from the chief as to the pros and cons and benefits. Other than just kind of a.
So we just, so we need to touch a few things I meant. So I don't want to fill up the whole room, as I said, I, I get a hundred people here, no problem. Like that, that most, you know, like I, there's no bad, there, there's no value to me comparing to all these people. I'm the, like, I'm the representative that talks to few people. Again, I'm, I mean.
With all due respect, you want this, so you're going to come in and.
And the thing is, I'm, I'm a concern resident. Like you're, I mean, with, with, I'm, I'm in New Haven. I see break-ins, I see it all the time, that people are reporting this stuff. And I, I'm just there as a concerned resident. Now, if the board doesn't want to make a decision, I'm just going to bring this to you. There's, there is, for your, for your return, your, your return investment cost, it's, there's no amount on, on someone's life and your safety. Return investment stuff.
So Mark, so I guess the, what I carry here is the debate in Friday, the time for trustees. To think about the philosophy if they're going to. Spend these, well, A, if they want cameras at all. B, if they do, if they're going to expend that money on individual subdivisions. Or C, which I think is probably the more likely, is doing that more comprehensive study of what other towns are doing. I specifically spoke to the police chief of Zion. I know they have a plan. He could probably get statistics for us. I know Jimmy also is the village attorney in Zion, so we could help him get those statistics. I know South Barrington has a lot of these cameras in their area. So I would say if we do these quarterly meetings where we kind of talk about these bigger issues, and I think this is. A big issue, obviously on the crime level and the camera level and the cost level. So I think this is something that we talk about, you know, continually over this quarter and get some of this background information. Not only, you know, on an individual subdivision basis that have the cameras now, but also what's, how it's helping these other towns. I will tell you, the police chief in Zion told me they have helped it greatly, but I don't know what their program is. I don't know what their plan is. So it's just something we, I think we continue to investigate. Trustee Pierce?
I just have a couple of points to touch on in this.
Sure.
One, I, I do agree with trustee Antioch. The other trustees, we need to know what the cost of this truly would be and the cost savings. I can't picture, I, I, I know Mr. Parkowski says, oh, with cameras, this crime will be solved and they're not going to have to spend all this time on it. And they're going to save money on investigations. I can't picture that. I can picture them adding this into their investigation, having this still be paid for, having this still be reports, having to go out and talk to the people. Having to do everything that's adding into the cost. So I, I don't, I would need to know from the chief that there's truly a possibility of cost savings. Now, that being said, I'm going to probably sound a little cold and heartless and cruel, and I probably shouldn't say what I'm going to say. It was brought up twice in this discussion. One, trustee Mason said we have a fiduciary responsibility for, for the security of our, of our residents. And Mr. Parkowski said, safety is our number one responsibility. I'd like the attorney to answer the fiduciary responsibility for the security of our residents. Because we have a police force, we don't have a security force. A security force stays constantly guarding something. Our police force is here for the safety of our community, to respond to crimes, to provide protection during events. But it, if it comes down to it, we cannot have a police officer at every house, every day, every hour. And, and I think that needs to be plainly stated that to help define the police department's role is this. It's quoting, I'm sorry if I'm misquoting you, but that's what it heard.
You're misquoting.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we got our, we got fiduciary responsibility to look at. They always misquote me. Thank you.
Jimmy, answer the question and then.
Real quick, just, the fiduciary responsibility is a term of art for attorneys. Yeah. It deals with finances, so that's. It's, right. And, and law to a limited extent, but we have a police force, they do a good job. I do think trustee Mason gave you a research assignment to look into whether we could pass basically an ordinance where we could sue offenders. After either guilt is found or disposition is found. And I, the second part, trustee Pierce, was from the person making the presentation. Can you refresh my recollection of what he was specifically asking? The even question was safety, I believe.
Safety is number one. I mean, I, I have a family, he has some of my family.
Sure, I don't, and again, there's a policy decision, of course, safety is important. I mean, I don't know how to answer that legally, and I apologize, because I don't, safety is of course important. We have a police force, they are staffed up, we work with them, and I believe that they do a good job.
So I feel like this is now becoming a very philosophical conversation. So I think this is something that we continue to talk about at a board level, at staff level with the subdivisions. Get some more research, you know, maybe in, I don't know, for two weeks, but thirty days, we come back and revisit this. I definitely would like to revisit this at our quarterly meeting and see if, if we can come up with some comprehensive plan. That'll incorporate not only New Haven, but all the subdivisions in the village as a whole. It's been something that's been on my mind. I don't want to hear about these break-ins either. So, you know, we do have to come up with some kind of a plan that we're. All right, I'll go, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Parkowski, you mentioned that you're the president of the HOA. Maybe you can work with your board to figure out how to best communicate to people the importance of blocking your car.
We did have a presentation, but again, I'm a parent of the citizen. I mean, that's been one of the ten years.
Well, we just heard from the chief that predominantly the break-ins are in.
They're coming more aggressive. People are actually going into houses.
I wish that might have been, so just whatever you can do to communicate to people, to do what they can do to check their safety.
Shut your garage doors during the day, lock your house during the day.
I'm outside all weekend. I leave my garage open. I leave my door open.
All right. All right. All right. All right, last, last comment, let's, going to start a whole new, all right.
I just want, I want, I'd like to thank you for coming out to this. Because residents like you who brought us information, you know, shared your concerns and everything else. It's starting a discussion here. You've reached out to us, but I appreciate you doing all that. Now, whether this comes to something that you, you know, we, we can do, we don't know yet, but I thank you for coming out and bringing those information to us.
Yeah, and I'd be, I'd like, I'd like to go to those other meetings, tell me when they are and I'll come to the meeting accordingly.
I will. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Good luck, trustee. Trustee Antioch, second. Trustee Pierce, okay, so.
You have exactly.
Your request. Okay, so I have.
Then I return my motion to adjourn. And I guess I'm motioning.
All right, we have a, we have a, we have a motion to move into executive sex, executive session for possible litigation. But no further business to take place after executive session. We have a second, second trustee Luther, roll call please.
Yes.
Good night, Jim.
Have a good night.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, we're going into executive session at eight forty five P M.